Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry we're late. We ran a little late. It is 8:15 and we've got a quorum here, so we're going to start. That's all right. We are out of executive session, if the record needs to reflect that. So the first thing is adjustments to the agenda. I have one. We are striking 5.1 and we are not going to have the world language presentation this evening. It has been moved to another board meeting. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. 4.0, audience and communications. Does anybody have anything that they want to say now? Or do you want to be called upon and address us as we cover any particular topic? Hearing none. We will move on to 6.0, reports to the board. 6.1, principals' report. Mr. Goodrow?
The only thing that I would add to my written report is the tremendous effort that our parents group has put in as part of Teacher Appreciation Week. We have been feted in a variety of ways this week. Massages one day, coffee and crumpets another day, potluck coming another day. I just want...
Flowers?
Yeah, flowers another day. It has been absolutely wonderful. The staff is most appreciative of that. I wish that those of you who were part of making the welcoming on the walkway possible. And I know that there were a number of folks involved in putting those messages together on the walkway coming from the lower parking lot to the school. I wish you could have seen teachers' expressions as they... Some of them didn't even walk on the walk because they didn't want to erase the work that you all had done. So that really has been a wonderful morale booster. And I wanted the board to, if you weren't aware of it, to certainly be aware of that. But I will take any questions on the written report. And that's all I have in terms of this.
Kathy, Bill, Colleen?
I have one, Bob. What was the rationale behind moving the kindergarten orientation from the spring to August?
The rationale really is that it gives... We've done the spring one for a number of years. And like anything that you do, you kind of evaluate how it's going and what happens. And with little duffers, perhaps more so than with older kids, five or six months can make a real difference in terms of where they are maturation-wise, socially perhaps more than anything. And the staff asked if we could do that orientation during pre-service rather than doing it in the spring. And that made a lot of sense. So we're going to give it a shot in the fall and see if that helps us get a better sense of where the kids are relative to readiness for kindergarten.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion questions on principals' report? 6.2, CSSU debrief. Colleen, can I invite you to maybe give a debrief?
Sure. I'd say that there may be just one or two pieces to pay attention to. One might be just looking, projecting ahead from the financial management report that there are two areas that are showing a deficit in the CSSU budget, one being the CY program and the other being transportation. So there may be a point when local boards are being asked to contribute towards those two areas. But we won't know more about that really until June. And we'll have an opportunity at a June business meeting, June 24th, to review that again. Something else we want to pay attention to is that the CSSU budget was approved. We had delayed our approval of that to allow for Williston and Charlotte to go back to the voters a second time to get their budgets finalized. And those were both approved this past week. And just a reminder that every regular board meeting from throughout the next year related to our regular board meetings, the CSSU board meets, and then we have our local boards. And in between the two boards, we're going to have a regular agenda item, executive session, related to negotiations. And that's for all board members within the SU. And it's just a 15-minute opportunity to do a brief update. And we decided to try to institute that just to keep everybody, all the board members, in the loop. And so if you don't have it on your calendar, you might start putting on your calendar Kathy and Bill 20 minutes before 7:00 is when we'll move into executive session at those meetings. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Questions, observations? 6.3, third quarter FMR. Who's going to lead us in that?
I can do that. We're in better shape than we were last quarter.
Yeah. Works miracles there.
Well, I need to give recognition to my staff because they're also helping in terms of the challenge that we've been under since the beginning of the year. And I'm also blessed that I have Tina. So between Tina and the staff, we're really trying to get us where we need to get by year's end. I'm not... I'm pleased that where we are at the moment, it looks like we're going to end up in the black, which is where certainly the goal was. And I was... The goal that I've had since we became aware that we had a problem was to eliminate that deficit from last year altogether. So that's still what we're trying to do between now and year's end. And as long as everyone continues to pull the wagon in the right direction and we don't get any unforeseen surprises, that's still what the goal is. But I'm pleased to report that we're where we are at the moment. Even if we ended the year right now and that's where we were, that feels good. But I'm going to feel better if I can come and celebrate with you at the end of July and we actually meet the goal that we set out to meet in the beginning.
Well, we're pleased to hear that, too. Questions?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously took a part of work.
6.4, parent council report.
Wow.
Well, I reviewed the minutes from the last meeting and apparently I did take the position as the Pi rep.
You sure did.
But I will plead Iroquois soccer as to the meeting on Monday night because I was on the field coaching the U8 group, so I couldn't attend. But Kate, would you like to report for us?
Sure, Kate. I also noticed a vast decrease in attendance at Monday night's meeting due to Iroquois soccer primarily, but other sports also at the same time. Multiple families with kids with multiple sports going on. I don't know how to do it. Quick parent council update. The Lake Monsters fundraiser was wildly successful. We made about $2,000,000, which is about twice what we expected to make. We're probably going to bring that one back next year. That's August 11th, if you've got tickets. And if you can't make August 11th, you can swap them for a different date. We have a golf tournament coming up, Sunday, May 19th, at Cedar Knoll. Sponsorships are looking great. Prizes are looking great. Golfers not looking so good. If anyone knows any golfers, we could use them for our event. Teacher Appreciation Week off and running. Lots of participation, lots of excitement. It's going to even get better over the next couple of days. Last thing I wanted to mention is that we're going to put together a survey to send out to parents to get some feedback on how Pi can do a better job next year. So look for that if you're a parent. And that's it. Quick update.
What time is the Lake Monsters game?
It starts at 5:00.
Thank you. Questions? 6.5, facilities.
Facilities committee is meeting next Monday at 4:00, after which I will have something to report to you.
All right. 6.6, technology.
We met today. A good conversation around how we're allocating funds, the technology funds that are in the budget for next year. We've decided to purchase iPads for the 7th grade, which will mean a reallocation of the laptops, which will mean 3rd through 4th grade will have laptops available to them. 5th grade will have their own set. 8th grade will have their own set. So we're pretty much, 3rd through 8th grade are now mobile, which is pretty exciting.
And the purchase of those computers, pieces, whatever you want to call them, that's all within our technology budget?
Yeah, it's just reallocating how we are expending those funds. So less desktops and moving to a more mobile system.
So we're not replacing the desktops as they age like we had previously?
Correct.
Okay. Question, Christina?
Does that mean now that every child will have a... there'll be a... okay.
So what it means is, right now, the 3rd and 4th graders have some desktops in their room and then some laptops that are available that they would have to buy for and sign out. But now there's going to be a laptop cart, so to speak, that the classroom teachers can work together on making sure that they have a full set so they can do more in-class, full-group projects with the laptops.
And the 5th grades also have that option, too?
Yeah, they share one.
I know they were saying they go to different rooms right now to do projects or something.
Just one or the other room. So there's one laptop cart for the two 5th grade classrooms. And they do share. So if the two teachers are both needing them, they just work together on them. And the kids will come and go and plug them in, and pretty seamless.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Questions?
I have a question. Where do... what's the philosophy, where do we stand on probably mostly 7th and 8th graders utilizing their own mobile platforms in the school?
So I'm fully in favor of it. I think it's a way... What we have to always keep in mind is the equity issue. As long as we have enough mobile technology to offset. So if we allow students to bring it in, policy has to be there. We have to make sure that the system is tight, which Jess and Technology Committee, CSSU Technology Committee definitely are working on. And then once that's in place, then if a project is being offered, does everybody have access to the educational resource, the mobile technology? So if you were able to bring a device in, but I didn't have one, I would have to have a device accessible.
What kind of devices? Tablets or are we talking phones?
Phones are really hard to work on, I would say. I mean, high school allows students to keep track of calendars on phones and things like that. That's something that I would be open to in terms of schoolwork. Tablets are probably... They have the iPad minis now, so that's probably the smallest device in terms of actual schoolwork.
Well, yeah, I'm asking because it's very easy to text during classroom activities.
Oh, absolutely. But it's also teaching responsible use of technology, so.
Any other thoughts on technology? All right, 6.7, principal hire update. Is that me? We are in the process of looking for hiring a principal in light of Mr. Goodrow's announced retirement. Have we addressed this before? So I can give a little bit of background for the record. We formed a principal search committee that was comprised of board members, teachers, building staff, and parents, and administrators, including one from another school in the SU. We went through a search process and interviewed a number of candidates. That part of the process has been completed. And the search committee has made a unanimous recommendation to the board about how to proceed. And the board is engaged in deliberations and a decision about how to proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7.0, discussion matters, policy review. There are a number of policies on the agenda to look at. I'm not going to list them, but instead I'm going to throw it to Cindy to perhaps guide us through what we need to do.
We're just looking for input on these six policies that are presented. One, two, three... Four of them are largely driven by statute. One is a unique policy to CSSU around job sharing. And then teacher supervision and evaluation policy. So I guess we can just start with the first one, see if there's any input, and go from there.
Okay. Do we need to do... wait a minute.
You're giving your feedback to Colleen, your rep to bring to the policy.
These are different than the ones in 9.3 on the consent agenda, correct?
Correct. Those are us.
So these are for discussion to give Colleen, our policy committee rep, feedback.
Yes. And I will be at the next meeting. And for some reason they're out of order in the packet, but let's do them in the order of the packet as opposed to the agenda. So the first one's D-17, teacher supervision and evaluation. Any questions? I think there are some feedback. And this is the second time it's come to you. There was some feedback last time around.
So you've given us a marked version of policy.
Correct, based on the input we got from...
Kathy, do you want my feedback? I just...
I had mine, too. This is my wife's laptop, and mine died, so...
And of course, the Chinese recommendation is that you love these changes.
Any substantive changes, really?
No, just the changing of the reporting out to boards.
Okay.
Clarifying rules.
Questions on D-17? Moving on, D-7?
Again, largely driven by statute.
Meaning we don't have a choice. So you better like what it says.
You can be a little more strict, but I just wouldn't go there.
I read all these. I didn't see them.
Okay. D-10?
This one's really driven by regulation.
I can only imagine. This is mandatory drug and alcohol testing.
For transportation.
Transportation employees.
We think it's a good idea.
And we have a very extensive program in place.
Okay, and really, there are not many changes to that at all. All right, next one is D... no, sorry, that's the appendix. D-11, job sharing.
You haven't had job shares here that I can remember in the last 10 years. I don't know if you had them prior, but this is just a policy that allows the board to consider allowing teachers to share positions. And there's different models that's played out, but...
Okay.
Yeah, that was one question I had, is we currently don't have any job-sharing positions.
So we have one in grade 5 currently. So one year.
Yeah, that's a little different. That's...
It was a leave of absence.
Leave of absence. Okay. Next one, D-12, Family Medical Leave Act policy.
And the big changes here, we are already in compliance, but our policy is out of compliance. It incorporates the rights regarding military families that were passed.
Support that change. And then the next one, wow, that's a long one.
Yeah, the title's almost longer than the policy.
Next one is D-15, HIPAA. Oh, this one I know.
It basically says welcome to life.
And then...
That's it.
That's it.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, number...
Easy button.
7.2, enrollment class sizes. 7.2.1, contemplative reductions association input. Do you want to do these together, Bob? Or should we call them separate?
I'd do them separate if you're doing two different forums.
Let's do the first one.
We'll do 7.2 first, enrollment class size discussion first.
I've got a handout coming your way for the board. On the class size piece, what I did is I updated the HCS enrollment history document that I provided you during the budget process. So I think I've indicated to you before that sometimes I think I'm running the Heinsberg-Hilton as opposed to the Heinsberg Community School. So there's a slight adjustment in the numbers that you even saw, you know, a month ago. So as you look at this, it gives you projected class enrollments for next year based on current staffing, what those class sizes look like. And you have a three-year history there of what your actuals were in '11, '12, '12, '13, and projected '13, '14. Then in the middle portion of the page, you have the average class sizes. And if you recall, in the recommended guidelines put out by the Agency of Education, K3, you're looking at 20 kids per class, 4 through 8, 25. So as you look at the history again for primary, intermediate, and middle grades, you have three years of history there. And then at the bottom of the page are the CSSU average class sizes across the four elementary schools and in the district, and a CSSU average. That information was presented to you as well during the budget process. But I thought that this would be a good reminder for tonight's conversation. The other part of the task that you gave me when I left here last month was working within the existing budget. Were there funds available for hiring additional staff? So thinking about the journey that we have all been on for the last five years, you know, the bullets at the top of the second page, the third quarter FMR shows that we're continuing to make progress on closing the budget shortfall from last year. And as I indicated earlier in this meeting, I certainly hope that we can do even a little better than what the third quarter FMR shows. Title I funding for next year is still unknown. The Agency of Education is indicating that we should get numbers by the end of this month.
Meaning it could be good news and it could be bad news?
Well, it's going to be... It's going to be good news in that we're going to get some funding. It's going to be...
What did our budget...
That's not cool, kind of guy. In terms of our budget.
You know, if you don't look at this cotton-picking work with your glass half-full, you get in trouble pretty quickly. So the good news is that we're going to get some money. The bad news is that we probably won't get as much as we got last year. So how much less than last year? They're telling us it's probably going to be a 5%, but we really won't know until they release the numbers in mock pilier. So hopefully, when we get together in June, we should have some indication of what the Title I funding will be. The reason I say that to you is that when I think about this problem, if we lose Title I funding, then we may lose our ability to do Tier II services to the extent that we do them now. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, we didn't qualify for a portion of our Title I funding because our low SES population, that number, didn't meet the criteria. So, I mean, that game's still up. So I think that plays into this conversation. So it would be important, from my perspective, for you all to understand that before we go there. So the last bullet I'm going to give you on this one is, what I'm showing you, you know that the budget you're working with is tight. The reason we got into the pickle we got into last year was because we are operating with a tight budget. So that's the background. So here's some good news. Are there any funds available? There's a triple E staffing adjustment that's been made as a result of personnel action you took at your last meeting. That represents $15,400. You received good news on health insurance from what you budgeted in the budget process. So that delta between what you budgeted and what the actual is was a gain of $23,000. Cindy Caneman-Warren has gone through and reviewed salary lines in the budget to include both co-curricular salaries and staffing for the building. And we believe there's $30,477.26 that may be available there as a result of that review. We have a $20,000 special ed contingency in our budget.
$10,000.
Yeah, wait a minute, I'm not done yet. We have a $20,000 contingency in our special ed budget. I'm not recommending... I'm not recommending that we pull the entire contingency. I would suggest to you that we use half of it. That would provide you with ten thousand. I'm a bald old man, so I cost more money than a newbie. So I'm assuming that you're gonna have a little bit of a swing around administrative salaries moving into next year.
Meaning we're not gonna-
You know, we gotta, we gotta bring a little levity to this. You know, the thing is, you're a bald old man going out and you're looking at the newbies and you're saying, "Those suckers are catching up." So, but we believe there's gonna be a delta of somewhere between eleven and fifteen. Now, they're solid up to a point. So, you know, you're working with plus or minus on these numbers. Other possible funding, haven't had a chance to really... You know, you tell somebody, "Go find a hundred and forty thousand dollars that you didn't budget." I think we did a pretty darn good job to pull this number together for you this quickly. So the unknowns are Medicaid funding. There could potentially be something there. We haven't done a thorough review of the service plan and special ed. We obviously have more information in May than we had in January when we put that together. There are still some possible staffing changes. Support staff contracts haven't been issued for next year. So there may be, there may be other possibilities within those general areas. I mean, it would appear, based on this, that we do have a chunk of money to work with. At the bottom of the page, what are some options? I asked the staff to think outside the box with me. I received recommendations from, from them relative to this. And thinking about all that, depending on who you are, certain things may be of more value to you than others. But obviously, anything that is currently staffed in the building is there because it has a value and it is part of the, part of the bigger picture. So I'm thinking about this in terms of... If we, if we take someone that's currently carrying a portion of the responsibility for the delivery of systems to our kids, and we take that away and we give them a different responsibility, that work still needs to get done. So I'm not sure that at the end of the day, we gain much by doing that. We're shifting the burden from one, from one place to another. In talking to Cindy about what's a safe number to use when we're talking about salary and benefits and salary-related expenses, a full-time employee is gonna cost you about seventy thousand dollars a year, give or take. If you go with a half-time person, you're gonna be looking at half that amount, so thirty-five thousand. If you look at adding para educator support, you're gonna be looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Given what the objective of this is, my recommendation would be that you look for teaching staff as opposed to para support. Now I'll take your questions.
How much teaching staff?
Huh?
How much teaching staff? I mean, you said we look for teaching staff, but we have both the kindergarten question and the fifth grade question. Is there a recommendation?
Well, here's what I want you to do. I mean, I can make recommendations to you. But, you know, I'm a bald old man. You gave me permission to retire and I'm leaving. And the last thing I wanna do is... 'Cause I've had the, I've had the pleasure of sitting with you for the past six years as you've deliberated budgets. And I know what that last annual meeting was like. So, you know, some people would say, "Solve the problem and just move on." But if I, from where I sit, I think some of the responsibility here really rests with you all 'cause you're, you're gonna, you're gonna be left holding the bag when I go out the door. It looks like you've, and my priority would be to put the staffing earlier rather than later. So I think it's just a question of how much risk you wanna take. And you want, you may want to make this decision in chunks rather than all at once. The priority for me would be for you to hire someone at the kindergarten level. So now I'll give you another bit of information. I went back and looked at the kindergarten census. And one of the things that we've been able to do over the last four years is really get much better, though I think we did a lousy job this year. Okay? I mean, we were off by, what did I tell you back in... I was telling you fifty-seven, fifty-eight kids back in January? And we actually registered sixty-eight? So we were off by ten kids. You'd think in a community the size of Heinsburg, we could figure it out. But that percentage is even better than Bill Smith. So I'm gonna tell you that we may be lousy at predicting enrollments, but our census showed us at school that we're looking at fifty-seven, fifty-eight kids. I had Deb Lavolette pull the information we have coming your way a year from now. And again, this is soft, right? We got fifty-seven kids on that list. So if we've got fifty-seven on the list for two years from now, chances are pretty good you're gonna be in the same cotton pickle come, come next year at this time. Heinsburg has become a very attractive place for young families and we're getting a lot of migration in. The birth rate doesn't indicate that you're gonna have class sizes this large. But there's gotta be something in the water or something's going on to make this happen.
So, but your first recommendation would be for a kindergarten teacher? And we possibly could do this in chunks, meaning we could defer till June when we have better financial information, the decision addressing the fifth grade class level?
I mean, in an ideal world, if resources weren't an issue, being a kid advocate, I'd tell you to hire two teachers. But when you look at your class sizes, you know, if you're, if you're gonna reduce class s-... I mean, look at those babies. You've really, you've been knocking on the door of... We're right there. And the minute, the minute you go to three in grade five, you look at the grade six numbers and, you know, the obvious question is, well, what's the difference between grade five and grade six?
Yes, grade, yeah.
And then you look at seven and eight.
Right.
And so-
So I'm trying to understand, we could make a decision on the kindergarten teacher tonight and we could defer on the fifth grade decision because we could have better financial information in June? And one of the options for fifth grade might be a part-time teacher because the fifth grade is, the fifth grade is three kids more than it was two years ago. I mean, and would a, would a part-time teacher in fifth grade, it looks like that would be targeted towards math literacy, take, take some burden off that larger classroom size?
So here's, here's a thought. I mean, the reason that's there is that you have math and literacy instructional times. Those are the times when, giving everything out, you wanna, you wanna be able to break down class sizes so that you can do a better job of individualizing instruction for kids. So, but that's not a slam dunk because there's, there's a variable to this. Halftime means halftime. So now you have to create a schedule that's gonna line up with the availability of the person in order to make it work. So it comes with its own challenges when you do that. But I think at the end of the day, you kinda have to weigh, you kinda have to weigh it all and, and figure it out. And how much... I've talked too much. I'll shut up and listen. Ask me questions. And again, you know, I'm the guy going out the door. The guy or the gal that come in behind me may have a totally different take on this sucker than I've got.
I have two questions, if I may. You've still got this broken down by single grades.
Yes.
Historically, Heinsburg used multi-grade classrooms. What, did you consider that? And obviously, you're not coming with a recommendation involving that.
I mean, play the game. I mean, you're, you start playing that game, you're, you're gonna make a difference of two kids.
Okay.
You know, two to three kids max. And what you're gonna do to classroom teachers, on the other hand, is now instead of having four preps a day, they've potentially got six preps.
Okay.
So, you know, I... As an educator, multi-age is great, and it was great. But boy, the curriculum we're trying to deliver to kids today, it's a different ball of wax. And I recognize that there are some schools that still do multi-age. But I think what it does to the delivery of instruction is now is it forces your educators to have to plan... It's almost impossible. Right now, we're looking for a minimum of ninety minutes for literacy instruction. And we're looking for sixty minutes of math instruction. So when you start saying, "Okay, as a classroom teacher, I'm gonna do two math groups," you know, 'cause you got a fifth grade math going on, you got a sixth grade math going on. No, the choices aren't great here. They really aren't.
What's your second question?
My second question is this. What do you need from us, Bob? Because you, you're making these recommendations to us, but I don't think that you necessarily are asking for us to make a decision. Because I don't know that this, although I think the board makes a decision about whether to hire someone that the administration presents to them as a candidate, I don't know that we necessarily make this decision about whether to hire someone.
Well, can, can I, before you answer that, I just wanna clarify with Cindy. Let's, let's say hypothetical, for example, if we were to charge administrators, and it would have to come from the board, charge administrators to find a one-year kindergarten teacher, we're committed to that one year. It's not like posting a position. We, we can post, because we don't know what's gonna happen in two years.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
There's two different issues. One, you can't have a one-year position unless it's for leave of absence or the hire's after August first. You can direct me during baseline to take that position out, which you did this year when you added some positions this spring. But the contract that's issued would be a permanent contract. The second issue is you have a RIF out there. So there's a, a person's going to be recalled to this if the administrative board, however you play this out, decides to create an additional elementary level position. That person would be recalled and it wouldn't come before the board for approval, 'cause it would just-
The, the, the actual candidate, him or herself. But, okay, that's, that's fair.
I'm sorry, can I go back to the first question?
Yeah.
It's not a one-year position, but we, so do we-
In your budget assumptions, you could assume to go back to three kindergarten?
And we have the ability to make that decision.
Right. It just contractually takes-
And, and it should, is it the board's decision tonight to add a position? Or is that the administration's?
I think in this circumstance, it's a recall and you won't get an opportunity to actually approve a contract. I would recommend you at least endorse the recommendation or, you know, authorize them to fill this. That way, it's clear how the decision may be happening and some record.
'Cause part of our budget goals had been to reduce numbers of positions. So it would make sense for us to have a public statement.
The, the difference to me is the administration taking our temperature on what we wanna do versus telling the administration, "This is what you should do." Because I don't wanna step across the boundary of what is the board's role and what is the administrator's role. I'm very comfortable having them come and give these proposals and making a recommendation to us and taking our temperature. But I, I'm wary of crossing that boundary and setting a precedent of stepping on their toes.
Although we do agree in the budget assumptions.
Yes.
But I thought Cindy just said she thinks it would be a good idea for us.
That's, that's my personal preference.
But because we, we have a formal approval of the budget assumptions. So in this scenario, when we assume so many positions...
Well, the issue is, the budget you approved, I can't remember which position, it was thirty or forty. Had forty now, say forty-one, maybe forty-two. Your budget assumption in September will be for FY fifteen, so it doesn't really relate to the action that the administration would take. Whether it's a straw poll that's reflected in the minutes or a formal action. I just think somewhere needs to be reflected that the board was aware, the administration was doing this.
Bob, Bob used the word "risk" earlier, which I think is the most appropriate, excellent term. And I, I feel like you're just asking us what kind of risk we wanna take. And what, what really concerns me is, is I got two fourth graders, Lisa does, Kate has one. It seems like I've had in the last month, my daughters come home and say, "Hey, there's a new kid in my class." And I'm thinking, "Oh, man." Third grade, go to third grade, not, not, not fourth grade, you know? And what happens if over the summer we get two more fifth graders? You know, then we're really gonna be up against the wall, then we're gonna be looking at-
Well, this was, this was Kathy's question, and I wanna get back to Kathy's question. Kathy, you were asking about chunks, and I don't know if you, did you get all that you wanted to on that one? I don't know if I completely understand the chunks.
I think it's appealing to make this decision in chunks, given that we might have better information. And that my, my assumption, that this is, this is probably what I want feedback on, is that it, at this late, we're late in the year to be hiring a full-time teacher, but we might have a little more time for a part-time teacher. I would assume that market's a little more fluid or maybe, I don't know.
And the candidate pool's a little bit less, I'm assuming. So we, I mean...
So we, I mean.
Less concerned at the elementary level at filling positions. We get three to four hundred applications per elementary position, so the pool won't have dwindled by-
But for the part-time, like if we made this decision-
Part-time is harder this time of year actually to do part-time, because people are still hoping for full-time.
Oh, so we, so it might be better to be, to wait.
In August, you're better, you, you're more likely to get a part-time because they haven't, they either haven't gotten a full-time or it works better. Some people does work better from the young go, but you just, you just never know.
Let me ask one more clarifying question, just to make sure we're all, Kathy and I are thinking the same thing. You feel that if we did this in chunks, that we would not be at risk in later in the year to find an appropriate candidate for that fifth grade position?
I think the risk is financial more than-
Okay.
So depending on who you ask that question of, Bill, you're gonna get a different answer. Okay, just so you know.
Well, I'll ask you that question.
Well, my guess is you're probably better off going out sooner rather than later.
On which?
On either one.
Well, I think we're trending towards, my sense, I'm, the weather system I'm feeling is that we might make an earlier decision on the full-time, but might look for a little more time on the part-time.
The only other piece that I would offer is that, the other known is that, um, we're gonna have sixteen more kids in our building. And on the revenue side of things, we, we don't recoup any of that money this year, as we all know, but we are gonna get a substantial chunk in revenue next year. And I would just like people to keep that in the back of their mind as well.
And, and when does that come in? Does that come in over the course of the year or only, yeah?
It's based on a two-year average that they-
I know, I know, but, but when do we actually, if, if we're, if we're issuing a paycheck twice a month to a teacher, are, are we posting it? Yeah.
Well, I, I guess, what I, what I was talking about is, is Bob's, uh, worry about the risk, how much risk. And I just wanted to, that is a piece that's not part of how we would fund this position, but it would minimize the risk for the following year.
Okay.
Can I also ask about, um, the, um, the math literacy block? What grade levels would that be at?
We have math and literacy blocks at all grade levels. It's that chunk of time, that ninety minutes or that sixty minutes where you're doing either literacy or math instruction.
Mm-hmm.
We refer to them as a block because what we're, what we've been attempting to do is all those resources come to bear.
Mm-hmm.
As you know, we've done staffing by primary, intermediate, middle school. So there are liter, there's literacy help that comes to grade levels at that time as well as math help when they're doing those chunks of instruction.
Mm-hmm.
So when kindergarten does literacy, they're all doing literacy at the same time. And that really helps us with grouping kids for instruction and being able to bring help there at that time.
So you don't see it as like Title I? Or do you see it as more additional-
Well, Title I is part of that support.
Title I, so it's like within that genre, it would be like that, okay?
Yeah.
I don't know if genre is appropriate.
Christina?
I have a question that's sort of in for Cindy, I'm sorry. But, and it's a question, I like the spring enrollment process now, because I think we do have a better set of numbers than we do in January. But if we're doing spring enrollment numbers, is that gonna give the board, let's say they drop to fifty next year? I'm, Eric, yeah, we're out two years here, and we do need to reduce that teacher position. Is that gonna give us enough time if we're not enrolling in March to hit that window where we can in our budget then close the RIF? Do you know what I'm saying? And close that open position, because there's only that one time we can reduce that staff without hitting penalty.
The board has to make that decision during the budget process based on the numbers they've got. So I'm sure that had they had these numbers in the budget process, it would have been an even harder process than it already was. Um, RIF decisions are done based on, well, contracts and reductions have to be issued fifteen days after a budget's approved. So if suddenly the board saw a drop of twenty students and they could, we could not issue contract and they'd just have a, they'd have extra money, so it's leaking the budget. Um, but it, otherwise it's gonna be just like this conversation now, if there's another twenty kids in the fourth grade again next year that no one saw coming.
Yeah, I was just worried about the late enrollment time mixed with the fifteen-day window.
Yeah, I mean, every time you time, um, contracts go out, we, so let me use a real example. Will Smith, Charlotte just approved their budgets. Technically, there's, I think, thirty days for somebody to challenge that. We have to shoot contracts because there's a new budget. If the budget got recalled and re-voted and failed, those boards are on for those contracts regardless of, so.
And then the other question I have, I'm sorry, can I ask two? Is what happens in first grade? I mean, we've got sixty-eight kids coming into kindergarten this coming fall. When they hit first grade, we're still gonna be stuck with the same type of number issue. Ideally, it'll reduce.
I, I would defer to the administrators on that, but we have some experience with the bubble class.
Yes, I know. But it's just something to consider, because we're gonna be faced with the bubble class again, which may turn into a consistent, if people are moving to Heinsberg like they are, because housing prices are great, we've got a great school. You know, we do. Um, you know, is it realistic to think that this is really gonna be a bubble, or is this gonna be the trend? And no one can afford the higher taxes, so that's another problem. And I'm sorry for all of you. And I'm just gonna raise questions to make your life tougher.
Okay, thanks.
The money, no, just, we'll have more next year.
We'll have, we will, we will have more money because of the, the, um, per pupil calculation. Um, which is a two-year look back, but as, as Jeff pointed out, in the first year, you start to get to see some. It's, this is, you know, what I, what I've been saying to anyone that'll listen is this is a good problem to have.
It's a great problem.
But it's a good problem to have.
It's only good if you can staff appropriately.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it's not good if you don't have the money and you can't, you're cramming twenty-nine fifth graders together.
Yeah.
That's not a good problem, right?
I, I'm looking for, Kate, go ahead, yeah.
If there is a decision to add an additional kindergarten teacher, are we gonna have a facilities issue? Are we gonna put another kindergarten class in?
That's the administrator's problem.
This is a wonderful job we have.
I know.
Yeah, we've obviously thought about that, yeah, Jeff's office.
Well, we're good space-wise for, for what we're talking about at the moment. Um, the facilities committee, their problem is going to be that if you look at these enrollment numbers, three years ago, we were thinking we wouldn't need the White Building for seven or eight years. And now, if, if these bubble numbers keep coming on a, they become the norm rather than a bubble, then you're looking at potentially having to do a major facilities project in the real short term. We'll have, we'll have classes in the White Building next year if we add staff.
So, can I ask one more question?
Please.
So, let's say, um, we were to, um, I guess, bring back somebody who had been riffed. And they're at the K-six level. Um, if for some reason kindergarten numbers dropped ten, twelve kids, that individual could be reallocated in the building in some way.
Yes and no, maybe. You'd be obligated to keep them and we'd have to find work for them, but we're technically supposed to tell teachers their assignments by June first or June fifteenth. There's some language around that.
You, you mean dropped by ten kids in the subsequent year's class?
No, I mean September.
Oh, oh.
Oh, so if, if some of these sixty-eight didn't actually come-
Yeah, just, you know, what are the, when we're talking about risks, what are the risks? And what do we, how do we address those risks?
Yeah, you better hold on to those sixty-eight kids, right?
Well, I have another question.
Well, I, I mean, did I, is I-
I mean, there's a couple of options, we can approach the association of teachers and reallocate them to the fourth and fifth grade if they ended up being, and there was no staffing there. The person could be approached without doing, um, the literacy, math blocks and we've crossed that bridge again. Or you'd have four kindergartens with just smaller class sizes than accepted.
Yep, because of the June first piece. Okay, thank you.
Okay, one more, sorry.
Yep.
So Bob, the last few years when you've had the quote, final registration in kindergarten, have you tended to gain more, a few more over the summer? What, what, do you, do you remember what those numbers are?
I haven't really looked at that.
But it hasn't been enough to make you shake your head or wonder, okay. So you feel the sixty-eight number is pretty?
My, I think I told you, uh, at some point recently that there's a potential for some retentions in kindergarten.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm pretty comfortable that you don't have to worry about sixty-eight in kindergarten.
So trying to wrap this up, I guess what I'm hearing is some degree of support for authorizing or accepting the recommendation of the administration to hire a kindergarten teacher and revisit the fifth grade staffing question when the financial picture is a little bit clearer later in the fourth quarter.
And I'm gonna add a, I mean, I gave you, you know, some bald old man thinking on staffing options, because there's always more than one way to attack a problem. My preference would be, if we're going to add staff in grade five, that you add a full-time person. Because there will be challenges with just having a part-time person. There just will be.
Schedule-wise.
Yes.
And experience-wise. So if, if you put in, if you put an ad out in the paper for a thirty-five thousand dollar position and a seventy thousand dollar position, your applicant pool is gonna be significantly different.
So, so before I ask for a motion, if that's what we need, can I ask you guys to come back to us when you're ready to come back to us on this fifth grade question with better financial numbers from the fourth quarter? Can you also give us some numbers of what kind of rev, additional revenue we'd be looking at from the state because of the change in the pupil count?
I don't understand.
So here's, here's what I'm gonna do, Kate. I don't wanna predict anything around revenue a year out.
Okay.
Knowing how the legislature plays games with educational funding, I don't want you to be burning me in effigy when you say, Bob said, I'm not going there on the revenue side. Um, what I will tell you is if current, if nothing changed and you were looking at what's happening today, here's what you could expect. I'll have Bob Mason try to help me with that.
That's all I would expect to see, with such a caveat.
Yeah, as long as you're asking me that question, I'd be happy to provide that.
Thank you. Kathy, did you have something? Is that the pleasure of the board?
I think, I think it helped to have a motion.
Okay, would you like to frame the motion?
Kathy, did you wanna frame that?
The board recommends adopting administration's recommendation for adding a full-time kindergarten teacher and request administration to return to us in June or in, do you want a date?
Our next board meeting?
Next board meeting to discuss the fifth grade teacher position based on better revenue, better-
Projections.
Projection.
Financial projections.
Financial projections. I will second that.
Thank you, Colleen. Those in favor, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. I guess-
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we did that in discussion, that's right. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Um, seven point three facilities rental. Uh, there's some material in our board package on this, but I, Wes?
Seven point two point one.
What?
Seven point two point one.
Oh, I'm sorry, seven point two point one contemplated reductions association input. We did separate that and say we were gonna do two different things, yep.
So one of the things that we're looking at doing at school is we've been looking for quite some time now at the delivery model. And part of the conversation around literacy blocks, math blocks, single grade levels versus multi-age, that's all been part of the conversation that's been ongoing over time. We're also doing a conversation that looks at how we deliver special education to our special needs population. And, um, some of our more challenging, more extensive needs, intensive needs kids are currently being served out of district. And as that population grows, and it has been growing for us over the past three years, we're looking for a way to support that population of kids within our school as opposed to sending them, uh, to outside placements. So that conversation is ongoing now and, uh, we have been in the throes of that all year long. Um, and I am hoping that we can come to you perhaps at the next meeting. We did an anticipated opening for an intensive special educator. And we're looking to see if we can find the right folks to help us do that at HCS. And I would bring a package to you that, um, would address that along with Laura. Probably Laura and I would, uh, do that together and come to you with that model. With the hope, if we can find the right people, of implementing it in the fall.
And you would do that presumably at our June meeting?
Yes, yes.
Do we, Cindy, we have a regular June meeting on the second Wednesday?
Yes, just to ask you, what is?
You have, you have a, the board retreat some-
That's May thirty-first.
Uh, May, and then this is June, this meeting, which I believe is June four.
That's the end of June, okay.
So there may be a need, um, due to timing, to pull together a special meeting just to prove the contract, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sounds good.
Now, yes, Patty?
I have a question, what Bob, about what Bob was just talking about.
Sure.
If that could be implemented in the fall, the special each group, so are you assuming then that those kids who now go elsewhere would come back for the fall?
Yes.
And is there any additional funds that you would need to hire these people to take later? Or because they come back? I guess, how would you fund the new staff to work with these kids?
Contemplated reductions. So that means that we have some non-intensive para-educators now.
Okay.
Those paras would have to meet a set of criteria that would, uh, qualify them to work with intensive needs kids.
I understand.
Obviously, we pay for services when we send our kids out. So there would be, we wouldn't any longer being, being asked to send funds out. We would develop our own program internally.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Seven point three facilities rental. Cindy put together some materials for us in relation to the proposal that we had at the last meeting on facilities rental. Cindy, do you wanna summarize your work and/or your conclusion?
Um, I can give you an update on S-13, it's, it did not make the- I can give you an update on S thirteen. It did not make the crossover, but it could come back next year, so.
Yep.
You should be aware of that. I would let the policy committee work on it next fall and come, and then depending on what their recommendations are when making changes, if they don't make the changes that this board thinks they should, then you could take it up locally.
Okay, and again...
Rather than do it separately.
The policy committee is an SU committee, but there are representatives from each of the school boards on that committee, and they make SU policies, but have the power to, we have the power to create a local policy that is not necessarily in complete conjunction with that.
Yeah, if you look at Charlotte's policy, they have a slightly different variation, which is that's in the package.
Okay.
But you can also do something else.
Thoughts?
I, I'm looking for the, the word or two that I thought was, you know, enough to drive a truck through loophole. Give me a minute.
Yep.
I've got some questions on this, but I, it seems to me that there's still the authority within the local to...
The board could decide tonight they wanna act on this policy and direct me to make changes. But number five on H one, which is... The sixth page of this section requires that there be custodial service and that a fee be charged, so it's not a procedural thing, it's policy. So either we have to remove that and make that procedural.
No, the, this is the word. Thank you for pointing that out, adequate. The word adequate is like, you know, it's all over the place. So what is, in this scenario, what is, what does adequate mean? It doesn't mean, it didn't say that it's required, it says provide adequate.
Then I defer to the procedures that are attached. And I don't believe any of our buildings in the SU allow public to be present without somebody from the school being present. And I think then, that's a different presentation from the, the risk you take by taking, you know, how you define adequate.
Yeah. So that, I think that's probably something that the policy committee can chew on.
Go on, Lisa.
Or, or us as board members.
Thoughts, or should we move on? Okay. I, I hear, I'm hearing confirmation of that conclusion. Thank you, Cindy. Seven point four, special meeting preparation. Of course, this refers to the special meeting of Heinsberg School District, which we are holding on May twenty-ninth at seven PM in the HCS gym on the question of whether we should move voting to an Australian ballot. I think it's important that we cover this topic in our school board meeting to be aware that it's going on, but I don't know that we necessarily need to spend any time talking about preparation other than encouraging people to attend. Colleen?
I do think that we should make sure that the select board is fully informed and invited. I think they need to be there.
Thank you for reminding me that. I was invited by Joe Colangelo to speak at the select board meeting on Monday night, but he neglected to put it on the agenda, so he asked me to come to the next select board meeting, which is on Monday, May twentieth, to talk about exactly that, to ensure that they understand what's going on and so that I can invite them to attend. The concern that Joe expressed to me, and I also had a conversation with Missy Ross, was the two meetings, the, the second agenda item we set was, okay, if the Australian ballot question passes, we need to move our school board meeting to a time earlier than we had currently fixed it in order to coordinate the voting on town meeting day, because it's inefficient and wasteful to not have them done together. And we had proposed holding the school district meeting at the same time as the town meeting, the way they do it in Shelburne and Williston. Both Missy...
And Charlotte.
Charlotte has town meeting on Tuesday during the day.
Oh, yeah, but...
Yeah, Charlotte, Charlotte has their school board, school district meeting the night before. Anyway, Joe and Missy both thought that they didn't wanna hold the meeting at the same time and encouraged us to consider having it at six, which would be an hour before the town meeting starts.
Are you looking for feedback?
Sure.
I think that if we were to go to a position where we share the evening, there needs to be some equity in the process, and it would be up to a team of people to come to some recommendation and determination about what equity looks like for our particular community.
From having made inquiries, equity in Shelburne represents the select board and the school board switching years as to who goes first at the same time the meeting is held, for example.
I think the meeting should be held earlier because I think the town meeting just plain starts too late.
Right.
And we start too late because of the CDU end of meeting. And I don't think that should be the reason that Heinsberg Town Meeting should start at seven thirty at night.
Well, CDU starts at five.
I know, but I've always been told, like, why is Heinsberg's Town Meeting starting at seven thirty?
But nobody goes.
I know, so.
It's over at five thirty.
Regardless of the equity issue, I think we, I would advocate for an earlier start, whether it's six thirty or, I think that makes sense.
Our question's bigger, we should go first.
I think we can work that out. It's gonna be a longer meeting.
I think the, the point is, is that we don't want a separate day.
Yes, I agree.
If, if the community that shows up on the twenty-ninth decides to move to Australian ballot, and then I'm still not clear if there's a separate process where that goes on a vote or if it moves automatically.
My understanding is that the vote at the meeting on the twenty-ninth will be determinative of whether the vote on our next budget for, that will be voted in March of twenty fourteen will be by Australian ballot or not.
And then we need to have a separate vote on the time.
Then, then if the, the way the agenda is constructed, if that first question carries, then the second question is, should we move the time of the school district meeting? Because if we didn't move the time of the school district meeting, we would have an informational meeting at the time fix that we have on that Monday night after town meeting, and then an Australian ballot presumably the next day at the next opportunity, which means the town of Heinsberg voters would be asked to go vote on a paper ballot on town meeting day and a paper ballot the Tuesday after town meeting day. And they would have to go twice, and clearly the town clerk's office would have to coordinate two elect, two votes.
And if it costs and everything else.
Which, which just doesn't make sense. Frank, did you have something?
The button is caution. Dina has been informed that all of that coordination has to not be running on the twenty-ninth as somebody else's lap other than your own.
Has someone communicated with Dina Monahan about having to coordinate and run this meeting?
I believe...
I'm looking, I'm looking at Central Office.
Yes, Danny has.
Okay, all right, yes.
I'm sorry, what was the question on Mr.?
My inquiry was whether Dina Monahan had been informed of the role that...
As the moderator, yeah.
...the class on the twenty-ninth.
Because it all starts with her schedule.
Absolutely.
Yes, and I've, I've heard that we confirm she's doing it.
It would be an unfortunate thing to not invite her to her own party.
And it's not our party, it's the community's party.
Kate, question?
Will the members of the HCS school board be in the audience as voting the community members on the twenty-nine, seven PM?
Well, we're always voting community members.
I, I am planning to attend in my capacity as a taxpayer and voter in the town of Heinsberg.
Personally, I think we need to sit as a group. Not, we're not at the, we're not attending.
I thought it was a school board meeting. I thought it was, I thought it was a meeting, a special meeting of the school board.
It's a special meeting of the school district, the town, the, the community.
And we're the directors of the school district.
Yes.
So, I'm, is, so is it our meeting or is it not our meeting?
You know what, let me find that out, because other towns have gone through this before. You're not the first one who's gone from town meeting to Australian ballot.
Yes.
I'll look into that.
And just, I forget what district it was, just in December, there was a vote from another community and they decided not to.
I'll sit when you tell me.
Tiny, tiny little...
It was a tiny town down near, down near Rattleboro on that corner of the street.
I'm not gonna say anything, but I'll sit.
All right, any further questions or discussion on the special meeting? I would encourage everybody to come. Moving on, seven point five, Act one fifty-three, student support services consolidation. I will take a run at this, and Elaine will correct me if I'm wrong. Act one fifty-three is a new statute that governs the allocation, distribution of special education funds?
Act one fifty-three is a law that says in, by a certain date, all special education professionals will be hired by the SU.
Okay.
And the decision that the SU board has to make is, how will they then assess those costs? And there are two ways that you can do it. One is through ADM, which is the way we do everything else, which means that regardless of who's got the high intensive needs and who doesn't in any given year, it all is distributed just based on ADM. Or you can do it the way you currently do purchase services, which means whatever you, you pay for. We're encouraging you to consider the ADM methodology because we believe that it is, allows for less variation in budgets. So that if you have a high-needs students, student that comes in one year, you don't all of a sudden have a hundred thousand dollar increase in your budget that you can't even talk about and that you have no control over. It gets really, instead of on the five hundred, four hundred and seventy-five students in Heinsberg, it gets distributed across the forty-three hundred students, HCS SU. And I believe that it is, it will provide the leverage to really focus on one of the best practices. So that's the work that Megan's been doing with all the special educators for the last year. But the, and the stick behind that is, hey, we're all paying for this collectively. We need to make sure that all the decisions we made are uniform across the school. We're getting, we're getting some data for you so that we can see what that's gonna look like.
And, and the reason it's here, Lisa wasn't at the SU meeting, but the, so she'll hear about it at the SU, but the reason it's here is mostly to solicit feedback from the local board members that are not on the SU board, because it's the SU board that is gonna decide whether to do it by ADM or purchase services. And so in order for those of us on the SU board to make an informed vote there, we would like to hear from the local board members, their thoughts on it. Some, one of the SU board members raised an interesting question, which is, if Heinsberg hypothetically said five to nothing, we wanna do it this way, and the three Heinsberg SU reps voted accordingly and got outvoted twelve to three or whatever the count is at SU, we'd be stuck with it. Even if we, would, excuse me, the question is, would we be stuck with it? I think the answer's yes.
Yes, it's an up or down vote when you have the SU board. I think that what I also heard at the SU board meeting is that the board wants an opportunity to discuss this again, perhaps at the retreat, before you have to act on it. So there will be another opportunity for mixed groups to talk about it.
And there was also interest in saying, well, what does, what does it look like? You know, just having an understanding of the numbers behind it. Even though over time, we understand that over time, we all share the same...
So you went, are feeling tonight?
If you have any gut reactions, but because we're gonna talk about it later, I guess I'm, I'm just putting it at your feet to think about it.
Conceptually, do you have a crackle?
Your... You know, if you didn't look at the numbers, would you say, oh, well, if I knew that it wasn't gonna have an adverse impact, I would...
Conceptually, I like the idea of not getting hit by a hundred thousand dollar surprise, so that the ADM approach seems to give us more, more even.
Right.
Globally across the S U, we have the cost anyway.
Right.
So, the daily membership makes more sense to me. It's not like you're gonna incur less costs if, overall globally, if you don't use the services, the cost is there anyway. Right? Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate.
And I think the powerful, a real powerful argument for the ADM is also the ability to nudge forward the shared vision of what those services look like.
And to have uniformity across the S U and how they're delivered.
Right.
All right, seven point six, board corner communications. Who wants to take this one? I haven't been writing anything, I know that.
I think we need to just, a special, a special meeting. Maybe just a paragraph.
Well, you know, I have been thinking about that since the last board meeting when it was pretty quickly determined that the board is not gonna take a position with respect to the special meeting. I have felt somewhat powerless to do anything because the board's not taking a position, and I guess some people have asked me about that. And so I'm, I'm certainly not gonna go out and write anything without authority from the rest of the board about it. And, and, you know, I, I don't even know that I wanna write something that says there's a special meeting.
And...
But, but in the vacuum, I also feel powerless. There was an article in The Citizen from someone who was clearly supportive of the Australian ballot, notifying the community about the special meeting.
I think it was a letter to the editor.
Yeah.
It was a letter to the editor, it was an article.
I, I did get a call from Dorothy Pellet, who's a correspondent for the Free Press, asking me some questions. She told me she had also talked to one of the supporters, one of the petitioners. So I, I expect her to be at the meeting. I kind of expected a, a story before then, but I haven't seen it. Do you wanna write a letter at least informing?
There's a meeting, show up. That's the issue.
Would you like to do that?
I don't even know if it's really an, an article per se.
I can contact The Citizen and with just time. Time.
Place.
I'm just wondering, is there any other burning issue that we wanna?
I'm not, I'm literally, this is gonna, I'm not, I'm gonna say, can you post this as a meeting notice? I don't want it to be from the school board.
Yeah, good idea.
So, May twenty-ninth, seven, seven?
But that probably gets posted from Central Office, doesn't it?
It's been warned from town. It's posted on the town bulletin's warning with that on that...
Yeah, if we wanna get it in, uh, maybe.
Look, just curious, would that be already? Sure, we'll let you know.
Yeah, sure.
All right, we will revisit more board corners later. Moving, Bob?
I just don't wanna have egg on my face.
I know what you're gonna say.
So, how do you want me to set the gym up?
Oh, that's not what I thought you were gonna say. I thought you were gonna ask us if you should send an alert now message the way you did for the annual meeting.
Right.
Informing people of the meeting.
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll do it through the Viking.
I put the warning in the Viking. I sent it tomorrow.
You did already?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna make sense. I just did, sorry, I didn't ask.
So that, I mean, I was...
As to your question, how should the gym be set up? I would imagine it should be set up like the annual school meeting for the budget, but without the table and chairs for the board and the administration up front.
Just the stand for the moderator and a microphone for the moderator?
Yep, and if you have the ability to put a mic in the audience, that might help too.
And I think we want to get some clarity about where the board is. And I think we want to get some clarity about where the Board is.
I, I'm gonna do that for you. I've got a note to call the SBA and find out. My, specifically, I'm gonna say it is a, is it a meeting of the Board or the community and what is the Board's role? I mean, I think that's what you need to find out.
It's a, it's the school district, but we're directors of the school district.
Yeah, I know, but that, still, you're not the one that's calling. You're not calling this question though. I think we just need to find out.
So I, I'm gonna set up all the chairs I got.
Yep.
We good?
Hope they're full.
Eight point, eight point oh. Action Matters, eight point one, approved calendar, two thousand twelve thirteen, no days. It's not me.
Okay, so, a hundred and seventy five days, I'm making it up. Hundred and seventy five days lands on the Friday, the fourteenth. You have a hundred and seventy six days in your calendar. If you wanted to, you could have the kids come back on Monday. Or if you thought that was a little silly to have the kids come back for one day on Monday, you could waive that day because you have the requisite number of days. Teachers would still work Monday and Tuesday.
Colleen.
I know we have different, different ways of looking at this, but over the years of waiver for a school day falling into Monday, we've done that a number of times during my time on the Board because it just made more sense not to try to pull families back in and from experience, those days were incredibly productive for faculty and staff and, you know, getting them more set up for the next year. So I would be in favor of a waiver for that Monday.
So just to let you know what is happening with your friends around the SU. Shelburne and Charlotte will have Friday as the last day for students. Williston will have students Monday and Tuesday because they had an additional, remember when the dump truck pulled out the wires? And they can't waive two days, they can only waive one. So of course, again, it doesn't make sense to waive Tuesday and ask people to come back Monday. So they're coming in Monday and Tuesday.
And we're not in that situation.
You are not, you're in the same situation as Shelburne and Charlotte.
I'm supportive of the last school day being Friday and based on my informal poll of parents, they were absolutely in support. Not that parents should be the only deciding.
I'm not even gonna say my comment about how, when do we go from one hundred and eighty days to one seventy five? But that's another story that I supported Brian. I would like to know that, I would like to know that too.
I can tell you that. So, two years ago, when the people in the communities, every one of our communities were saying, oh my God, we have so many half days, we can't stand it. We would rather have full days off. So we took eight half days and we traded them for four full days. So there you'll notice no half days on the calendars anymore for two years. And instead, we take full days for parent teacher conferences and a full day for professional development. So that's what happened. It seems to be a good trade. I mean, so that, I think that both parents and teachers will say half days really aren't that productive.
Those hundred and eighty days included five half days.
They include ten half days.
So we never really had a hundred.
Yeah, 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 that's the trade.
Okay, gotcha.
That's the trade. So, I mean, that's always up for discussion every year.
I knew it was bad, I didn't know it was ten. Does it state long, is there a?
One seventy five.
So we're full days?
Megan just-
No, they say actually one seventy five, you can do some session, which is take, if the kids have lunch, that's considered a day. I mean, in terms of the statute itself.
Would you like to be here, Bill?
You, you all know where I stand, but it's obviously, I, I feel like it's a hundred, my kids will kill me, it's a hundred and seventy five days. We pay the teachers to teach a hundred and seventy five days, whatever it is, and they should be teaching those days. That's my position.
Hundred and seventy six. Hundred and seventy five is what the statute says you must, we have a hundred and seventy six.
Whatever our contract is, so it's, to me, it's symbolic things aren't. Sometimes they carry weight, sometimes they don't. And just for me, it's, we saw our taxes go up nine percent this year and I want my nine percent worth. And what that says to me is, is truly then does Thursday become the last teaching day instead of Wednesday? And all I hear is, everything we read is, there's not enough time in the day to teach your kids what they need to learn. So I think it's one teaching day that we lose. That's my position.
Yes, have we ever considered, since we're cutting a day out because it's contracted with the teachers using an extra day, that if, you know, that we get that extra day sometime in the summertime without paying an additional per diem or something to come in for each teacher?
Well, we do have them come in.
We use them, we, the teachers-
We don't, the teachers-
But isn't that part, that's part of it anyhow, right?
No, no, no.
No, no, that, that's, you're asking that for the-
The day, the day that the students come in, let's, let's say that you decide Friday's the last day. The teachers will be in on Monday, which would be the one seventy sixth day. They're also in on Tuesday, which is their, the additional day. So they're doing two professional development days.
Okay, so the two days covers one of their teaching days.
Right, the teachers don't work any less. We do, in a way, we get that day and if we wanted to, I guess we could say, hey, we'd like to have some of you do this work on, on this day instead. I mean, I, I kind of, I like the concept behind what you're saying. That, wouldn't it be great if we, instead of like, everybody does everything on all of the same days, we could say, well, we need some people to do this work during the summer, let's take these three days. I mean, I'm hopeful that if we get to calendar two point oh, the Vision Calendar, that that calendar will allow us to do more of those kinds of things. Not everybody has to be working the same hours, the same days, the, what is it that we need to make sure that learning happens for our kids? And what's the flexibility that's going to allow that to happen?
Alright, hey, this is an action matter to approve the calendar, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to have the last day of school for students be Friday, whatever June-
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth?
Right, question. Second.
Thank you Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Consent Agenda nine point oh. Do I need to read all the contents of what's on there?
No.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you Bill. Thank you Kathy for moving. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye. As opposed?
Alright, motion carries. Directors' comments, ten point oh. Lisa, I'll start with you. Colleen? Bill?
Quickly, remember Paul Lamerson, our former chair, talked about discussing the Charlotte's and sharing the resources or something along those lines? I'd like to open that discussion if everyone wanted to and I'd be willing to be the point guy on that.
Bless your heart.
So is that, is that the administration that would, that would facilitate that?
There is a memo, actually I may have it in this pile, that Cindy wrote, that I will provide to you. It has been on prior agendas, we've just had chock full of stuff.
And Charlotte too, they've been busy.
Oh yeah, obviously. Busier than us in some ways.
So let's make sure that we put it on a future agenda.
Can we put that on a retreat agenda?
Oh yeah, can we do that?
Yeah. I'd just like clarity about the process.
Kathy?
Nope, yes.
Thank you Colleen.
Alright, the only thing I have is, Central Office sent me these pamphlets, which I'll just take this opportunity to hand out because I haven't seen all of you in a while. It's a little pamphlet on negotiating and bargaining because of the teacher contract that we have to negotiate this coming year. One point oh, confirmed next meeting dates, Policy Committee on the twenty ninth, Board Chair is on the twenty first. Retreat is not on here, but we have a retreat on May thirty first, which is at the Sunset Ballroom on Shelburne Road. For those of you who weren't at the S, at the S U, at the Sunset Ballroom and the Comfort Inn on Shelburne Road.
Comfort Inn is renovated.
It's, um-
Top back behind what you're view for.
It's kind of across the street from the Champ car wash.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Heads be on the reviews and then-
Yes, yeah. And then we have a CSSU and HCS Board Business Meeting on the June twenty fourth. Alright. Not bad.
Really, not bad at all.
I will entertain a motion, actually no, I don't think we're ready to adjourn because we need to go back into executive session to discuss personnel matters. So I need a motion to go into that executive session, please. And I do not need a second for that, correct? Do I?
I think you do, yeah.
I do, okay.
Don't need one come out.
One second.
Thank you Bill.
You can just declare out.
Thank you very much, audience, for sticking with us.